Call a special meeting, go here. Go call, go please.
Alderman Hall, Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Hoppy?
Here.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman John Person?
Here.
Alderman Studer?
Alderman Tudor?
Here.
I'll present, you'll have a forum.
You're right, it's a special meeting, Wilmington City Council makes the United 2013 is now in session. Uh, to start off, we have presentations by the IDNR, and I can tell they got your, uh, the slide presentation available. So, uh, guys, uh, put it right over to you, and I'll be started.
Alright, well, thanks for having us up this evening. My name is Lauren Wobick, with IDNR Office of Water Resources. Also with me tonight is Rick Gash, he's the head of our Engineering Studies section, and Arlen George, who's the director of the Office of Water Resources. So, he's kind of the head honcho here. Uh, so what we wanted to do, we've been working with the mayor and staff, Tony and Colby, on dealing with the dam. Actually, I think we've gone back many years, uh, talking about this dam. The more recently, uh, this administration has taken to the pond to, uh, you know, take more concerted efforts to move forward with getting the land rights. Uh, there's been a, have a move for the city to want to transfer the dam to the state of Illinois. And so, we've said, "Well, that's, that's a possibility. We're not willing to do that until we have all of the land rights at hand, and enough land rights, uh, for the main stem dam and mill race dam, to allow us to, to deal with public safety improvements." And so, uh, the city's been working pretty diligently here recently towards that end. And so, the mayor's asked us to come up and kind of give a little bit of an overview of where we're at in terms of what we, Office of Water Resources do in terms of looking at dam removal, addressing public safety. And so, we put together a little presentation to kind of go through that. Uh, you know, while we're here, again, back to the public safety issue, you're well aware of the issues that occur there. And, you know, right here is, kind of sums it all up. Even with the large signs that say, "Hey, there's a big problem, there's big danger here." Uh, the fishing is just too attractive right there, uh, to keep people out of the river and out of harm's way. Uh, so much so, of course, you know, the, you know, the signage that occurs by the main stem dam and even along the mill race dam. So, public safety is part of what drives, that brings us here, especially on public waters. We're looking at trying to make dams safe, as run a river type dams. The conditions of the dam as well, Wilmington, you can see, although it's in pretty decent shape, as far as we can tell, you can start to see it showing its age in terms of deterioration. Definitely on the mill race dam, as you're well aware, from its breach and the issues that it's had, that we have a temporary dam in there to kind of hold and force the water to go back over the main stem dam. So, obviously, there were structural issues going on and that existed here with the old mill race dam as well. So, part of what, you know, brings all this to light at this point in time is the governor's dam removal initiative that he announced here, or was that this last fall? Basically, that said that we would remove 16 dams in about a two-year period. And the dams in Wilmington are among those that he included on that list. And so, we're looking at removing 16 low-head dams, again, that no longer serve their original purpose and purposes in many cases. Uh, we want to look at the safety for all the users, improve river quality, and take care of some of that aging infrastructure like we see on the mill race dam. And so, we've been at this, uh, for a while now. There's a couple of examples of dams that we've already been addressing. Uh, up on the Displanes River, the Hoffman Dam up near Brookfield Zoo area. A dam similar in kind of height and configuration to the main stem dam on the Cankey Key. Down below, this is the condition today. Uh, there's a partial removal, you can still see little pieces of the dam on either side, but essentially the main, part of the dam was removed and the channel was restored through the middle. A little bit taller dam, Yorkville, Blackberry Creek, right before it comes into the Fox River. There again, high, about 12-foot tall dam, deep scour hole. Uh, we're still in progress. This is as of maybe about a month ago, the dam removed and we're doing channel restoration back through there. So, we have been working with dams. We've got another dam we're working with near Gold's Bay. And then, I'll show you later, there's several others we're working with on the Displanes and on the North Branch Chicago River as well. So, why this study? We've come in, what would we look at? Uh, number one, of course, because of the fatalities and the continued deterioration of the dams, uh, that's kind of what brings us to looking at what could be done there. As I mentioned, the city's been working to transfer property, uh, property land rights together to be able to transfer that to the state of Illinois. Throwback in 2006, we even started looking under the dam public safety initiative. Uh, started looking at these dams from that perspective too, in the public safety. What kind of signage is out there? What kind of restrictions are there for the public to keep them out of harm's way? That was followed up in '07 by a study that we had performed by CTE or ADCOM, where they went through and kind of evaluated in a general sense what could be done in a number of these run-of-river dams, especially those on public waters. And then, of course, in 2012, we have the governor's dam removal initiative, and that actually brings dollars into the equation. Okay, so what, the goals of the study is we get into looking at that. Our three main focus points, number one, of course, public safety, looking at the ecological benefits and the impacts, you know, for fish passage, habitat improvement in the river, and then, of course, improved recreation, safer recreation, uh, to allow non-motorized kind of boating in the channel. From the public safety goals, of course, eliminating the public hazards, loss of life from the hydraulic roller below the dam. As we came into town today, there's quite a roller going there today. You can easily see there's some big logs out there this afternoon. Uh, creating a safer river for all users, and as you're probably well aware, you know, reducing that need for emergency responders. There's so many cases on a lot of these low-head dams where it's not necessarily just the victim that's in there, but it's the responders that come and end up in harm's way many times as well. Looking at the ecological benefits, in this case, if we remove the main stem dam, uh, did a quick computation based on some of the river mile, documented river mile streams that I have, and between the main stem itself and all of the tributaries that would have access to it, it opens up about 185 miles of additional river and tributaries for fish habitat beyond the dam. Of course, looking at improved aquatic habitat within that impacted area and improved water quality that comes with the removal of an impound. As I mentioned, the recreation goals, to enhance recreation for, you know, watercraft, fishing opportunities, and create a safer natural area for the public to enjoy, especially in this case where we've got a public body of water like the Cankey Key River. So, all of that study included in terms of work. Uh, number one, extensive surveying. We do have surveying, we've been here before, we do have cross-section surveys, for example, on the mill race, on the main stem. Uh, what we'd probably do is we go into, taking it deeper, going into this kind of study deeper, we'd probably do a bathymetric where we actually have equipment that's mounted on a boat that would go out there and essentially scans the bottom and would give us much more detailed mapping of the river channels themselves. I know we were talking with the mayor beforehand here, you know, the sediment that exists in the mill race. Now, the mayor was commenting on how it's, you know, notably sedimented in there more. Obviously, if we're looking at stabilizing that channel, looking at dam removal, we'd have to be doing some sediment collection testing, perhaps some sediment transport modeling of, depending on what we find from the sediment testing we would do. Then, water surface modeling, develop a computer model of the main stem and mill race conditions out there in order to assess, you know, different scenarios. What happens if we do, you know, removal, partial removal, or to put in some sort of a modification to the spillway itself? What does that do to water surface profiles, especially upstream of the dam? The environmental aquatic, you know, investigations, that would, you know, consider kind of the wide gam, especially if we have state funds involved, uh, looking at impacts to any, you know, wetlands, endangered species, you know, archeological side of things. You know, what impacts are there to existing environmental conditions that are out there today? Of course, looking at public safety alternatives, and then doing an economic evaluation of those various alternatives for modifications or removal of the dam. This just shows an example, kind of a pretty colored picture here. This is in the town of Danville. Like I mentioned, Danville is one of those places we're looking at dam removal. So, we've got the Vermillion River kind of flowing this direction. The dam sits right at this point. Again, a similar dam in size and shape to what we have on the main stem here. So, this kind of exhibit was prepared to show the change in depth for a normal flow. And so, just to kind of show the change in this point of the river, uh, normal flows would be, or the height of the water, depth of the water would be about two feet, two and a half feet lower under normal flow conditions than it is with the dam. So, that kind of evaluation would be done as well as we get into this kind of study. And these kind of exhibits then, you know, can be prepared, and that helps to kind of, for the public to better understand or explain what are the impacts? What, what do you get into if we have this scenario versus that, removal, modification? So, what alternatives could be looked at? Typically, when we've gone into these kinds of dam studies, obviously, looking at full removal, partial removal, like I showed up on the Hoffman Dam up near Brookfield Zoo, where a portion of the dam remained for some channel stability. Uh, rock ramps are an option, concrete steps. And in this case, we'd have to look at what modifications would be necessary for the mill race. So, full removal, of course, it'd be, saying, "Well, what, you know, what's it going to look like with full removal?" The best way to do that is just simply look downstream of the dam. Now, that's what the river wants with the Utopia Dam. So, if we remove the dam, that's likely similar kind of the situation that you would see progressing up through the dam and upstream. Partial removal, this is that same picture I showed you earlier of the Hoffman Dam. Again, you can see a portion of that OG spillway section left in place to kind of stabilize, uh, some of the channel bank. In this case, there were more sediments and some fine-grained material that we have actually on the Cankey Key here. A rock ramp, uh, you'll kind of see a horseshoe shape to this. This kind of helps concentrate the flow into the middle. There's different configurations that you can come up with. This is one, just kind of an example to give you a flavor of a rock ramp, kind of an alternative at a dam. Concrete steps, uh, Yorkville, the Yorkville Dam, Tony's familiar with, with this one. Uh, this just kind of shows we got the same kind of OG shaped dam. You can see a portion of that OG shape right here. Uh, in this case, we ended up coming in and installing steps based on research that was done at the University of Illinois Hydraulics Lab that looked at different configurations of steps and ramps. Uh, this shows kind of the performance of the dam with the steps in place. There's actually a large riprap basin at the base of those steps. Again, mill race modifications, this would be key and where we have to work with the city pretty close to. As we start looking at what-if alternatives, especially in dam removal, what's going to happen to the mill race? What does the city want to see there? You know, what, what options do we have? So, I see that actually being a big part of, of study when we get into that point. Okay, as I mentioned, the governor's dam removal initiative, that does bring dollars to play at this point. Uh, and so, we've got, uh, funding appropriated for the removal of those 16 dams that were mentioned, um, through the governor's dam removal initiative of 2012. Uh, it's also part of the governor's Jobs Now program to create jobs. And so, as we've gone into these, especially dams that we own and those we've looked at, the state's preference will be to remove dams. Unless we've got some other compelling reason or benefits for going some other direction, the state's preference in that case will be for dam removal. So, and like I said, we've been into this for a while, at some other dams. Want to quickly kind of go over some of the common dam removal concerns, misconceptions as we get into this, you know, once it's kind of gone public, or especially once we're further into the study, or maybe have some alternatives to share with the city in more detail, once that hits there. Uh, you know, there's a number of people who had their first kiss at that dam and are very passionate about dams, and you find all those people very quickly, uh, when that goes to light. But some of them, we found, you know, "Well, just sign it." You know, "My gosh, I have to sign it and people will stay away." As you well know, because of all the signs you already have out there, and even based on recent court cases, putting up signs does not protect the owner from liability for accidents that actually happen at the dam. Some of the typical comments we've gotten, you know, "The rivers are like bathtubs. You can take out the dam, they're all going to dry up. Uh, they'll just empty out. The pooled area will just become a large mud flat. We'll not be able to fish there anymore. We won't go boating there anymore." Again, if you look downstream, that's the best kind of scenario to see, well, what's the river going to be without a dam? Dam removal and fisheries, that's always another key issue that we come across as we start looking at doing something with dams. This will pull from a recent example, again, I mentioned the Danville Dam that we were dealing with. Uh, we've done extensive fisheries work there. Even right now, we're doing continued monitoring through Eastern Illinois University, um, fisheries upstream and downstream. But this is fairly typical, uh, from a species standpoint, of fish. Uh, downstream of these dams, we find a much larger abundance of fish species than we do upstream. Here in Danville, this was a study done in '04, and again, in, in 2011, that showed the difference there, and this is pretty common, that the, those dams throughout Illinois where we've done this kind of an assessment. Same thing with that stream habitat that we get into above and below. Uh, this chart of lots of bar graphs here is essentially showing, a lot of these dams around the Fox, here's the Danville Dam as well. Uh, these lower bars are kind of showing what the habitat quality is above the dam, and then, the habitat quality below the dam. And so, removing that dam tends to improve those, the overall stream habitat as to similar to what was below the dam. Schedule, uh, as I mentioned, we've got these 16 dams the governor's asked us to try to address in the next two years. And so, we've got these, uh, what is it, about 10 or 11 out there? These are the ones we're working on actively right at the moment in terms of looking at those alternatives. We're into the study and assessment of these dams. And so, while we continue to work with the city on, you know, helping them with determining what land rights we need, and as I mentioned, we would probably fairly soon try to get a survey request in and try to collect more survey information here in Wilmington of what we have. Uh, we do have these dams that are currently kind of on the docket right now that we're dealing with. So, I guess my point being, we're not going to dive into it hard and heavy next Thursday. Okay? Uh, we've got these going, all again, part of the directive. Your dams aren't part of that 16, so obviously, it's ones that we want to get to as quick as we can. But these are ones that we're working on current. So, with that, uh, the intent is just to kind of show you where we're at, what kind of where we're headed, what we would get into in terms of an assessment. And so, with that, mayor, if you take any questions or anything specifically that you wanted to have covered?
Any questions? You guys have any kind of question you're concerned?
I'm off, like, I know you said we had last day and four, but how long do you think before you would be coming down here to perform?
I'd actually start out here. I would think here within the next six months that we would, you know, be getting additional surveys. So, we would kind of start in, we have just the one survey crew that we keep hopping all over the state pretty active, and so, we would definitely get that request together to collect, uh, additional more detailed survey. Like I said, we've already been here, we've already collected some surveys, so this would be to, to give us even a better definition, to kind of fill in the gaps, if you will, between our existing survey that would help us to not only make sure our models are, you know, we're modeling correctly, but again, to then help produce exhibits. Like I showed you the colorful exhibit that showed depth changes and, you know, what's it going to look like, what it was like last, you know, August when everything was super super dry. That additional survey allows us to put together those kinds of exhibits and evaluations. So, we would begin that, I would say, within the next six months.
Within, within a year, we would come back with the governor's engineering results showing what happened with the, it was with alternatives that we want to show on the slide. As we work closer to dam transfers, we get those properties, you know, required for these necessary construction. One of the biggest concerns that we have, especially with our responders, is, uh, even though we get that transfer from city to state, does the state have any media plans to take care of, at least eliminating that undertow? You know, as a temporary solution until you got your guys to do what about the whole engineering stuff?
I think they would depend on when the transfer occurs. We would not want to leave the condition as it is for a long. So, I would say, sooner or later, we would take possession, we would be looking to do some emergency.
Now, just be more or less put rocks in or whatever you guys need to do this kind of?
I would expect that to be the most logical way to go about it. I'm not sure if that's the only way. That's sort of what we would have expected. And doesn't get rid of all the hazards?
No, no. I think that's probably the biggest, well, the biggest hazards is the undertow and relative danger of the undertow that exists there.
A lot of rocks create other hazards up the road.
I hear the accent. I just want to make sure we get rid of the undertow. Like I said, one of the big things we really hit on the other day, um, said that, well, we have issues there. Um, our guys are going in there to try to save somebody. They're putting themselves at risk, and I'm sure Dennis, or that's the guy who tells us many stories. I think during the flood rising, we had one guy hanging onto the tree, and I heard him try to help somebody else. And it got very, it got very real, you know, where he potentially blew somebody that's going out there to help somebody else. So, I want to try to eliminate that, you know, potential hazards as quickly as possible. I think that's why we've been diligent on trying to get, get these, these ones, get them necessary. Of course, we have the legislation to deal with it first as well, because when the dam transfer act was created, it was actually to go to ICA. I think back to '92, ICA was responsible for all of it as well now. You see it's the IDNR, so I think we've got legislation passed. I don't know if we've got that, you know?
Not yet.
Okay, I understand. The House passed it, but it's still a part of the, probably the omnibus bill will probably get passed in this session.
So, there. I got a question. Say someone goes out, you say you're trying to go forward, litigation, or if that's not the subject or anything? Because I know a hundred percent pass. If they hold and push forward?
In fact, you know, right now, the, the money's there, and the money is there for Danville. You know, if, if there was a general say, "Oh, we really want to push hard for steps," if something, a rock ramp, uh, other communities, what we're told then is right now, you know, the governor's set aside this allocation money for removal. And so, that's, that even gives us more evidence right now to really, that's why we're kind of pressing full steam ahead as best we can to take that ability while, while the dollar's there and the administration's favorable of spending the dollars and that kind of things.
Out of the 11 that you're working on currently, um, are you still in the study phase? Or are you actually in construction?
Um, kind of all, all the above.
Okay, and how many of those are being removed completely and how many are being just modified?
I think all of them are ready, nearly completed. There might be even a placement on the bank, but the dam itself will be taken down with the channel.
Yes, Blackberry, I think that one's a full removal. Uh, right now, Vermillion and Northport, uh, the city of Danville is saying, their administration is saying, "Yeah, we're leaning towards removal." They haven't made any final decisions. Uh, many of these others here are all part of Cook County Forest Preserve District, and they've said, "Yes, we're, we're on board with removal." And so, then it's just a matter of, for each site, you know, site kind of dictates what's the best conditions going to get full removal, or if there are reasons to keep part of it in there. But even when partial removal, the basic goal is that it performs the same way or look essentially like full removal. Same thing with the North Branch Tamalshanter Dam down at the bottom. That's in Iowa's Park District, and they have said, "We're ready to sign on the dotted line for, for removal."
Does that, the mill race, present a challenge? Trying to keep both the mill race and the dam good and able to, is that a challenge?
Absolutely, yeah. Because right now, you know, that, that temporary dam keeps that pool in the mill race. Uh, without it, you know, flows like today, there'd be, you know, you'd have flow in both channels. Uh, flows like a year ago, you're only going to have flow in the main stem. So, I really see that as kind of a key point as we go into this specific evaluation is, what do we do with the mill race? What does the city want to see with the mill race versus what we can justify for dollars that we have available for doing that? Obviously, uh, from just taking the dam out, we would probably, we wouldn't leave an unstable condition, so there'd be some work of some sort in there to, to lead to a stable channel, whether it was a high-flow, stable channel. If you want, you know, continuous low flows, that would have to be looked at further and have a further discussion. But again, that's kind of the key point because you do have the two.
I think that's the biggest challenge, I mean, because as the ICA decision, you know, we don't want to lose that. I naturally want to give that concept, you know? I just didn't know how, you know, how, how that might work.
Excuse me, I have a question. Uh, downstream from our dam, or the dam, it's, it's pretty important to us for drinking water. Uh, it's where we get our supply. Did you say there was an improvement in quality of water by when naming the dam?
The higher quality of water comes primarily from impound upstream. You know, when you've got the impound water, especially in the summer, uh, dissolved oxygen levels in there are just extreme, uh, extremes from daylight to nighttime. It's that kind of, the plankton, the algae's that are in there. The water quality improves by eliminating that, that pool kind of condition. Downstream, like your intake, uh, other than, you know, the conditions of the water that then has actually come over the dam, whether, you know, if it's improved, would it improve there? In the same manner, yes, but is it, doesn't certainly any improvement downstream? Not by the use and bounds beyond what you have today.
One question. Say Wilmington became number 12 on the list. Do you have just one contractor that goes around, takes care of all of them, or do you use?
Yeah, Walter. And we used ICA, bulletin process to advertise our jobs, and so then it's a little bitter.
So, just because we're number 12 or 16 on the list, doesn't mean, you know, all them jobs got to be completed before you come to Wilmington?
No, no. Yeah, if we ran into some snafu on Demster Dam, yeah, it's, uh, obviously, and things were still moving full scheme ahead in Wilmington, we would keep pressing on Wilmington. We wouldn't let one of these mature us.
You guys, I know you guys probably like to have more than a consensus for you to start spending money on this, on studying this survey for dam removal. What would you need from the city? You know, do you need a public hearing to go through this and get more public input? Or a resolution from the city council? Letter from the mayor with authority by the city council?
When the dam is transferred to the state, it becomes the state's decision to some degree because it becomes state property, okay? But we're going to want local support. I might suggest that we might want that prior to actual taking of the dam. So, we know where the village is at on the issue, so that we're not left holding a dam that we can't do anything with.
And we have a timeframe to put on a study. I know you normally like to do a, you know, a four-season study of, you know, the hydraulics. Are we talking 18 months to come back with some kind of modeling recommendations of what would be the construction, uh, phase?
I think we're trying, um, more towards a year from now to come back with some preliminary engineering concepts of, we do this, what's going to happen? We do this, what's going to happen?
One of the actions that we've taken is that we currently have a crystal proposals out there right now for outside consulting services specifically for this, because we have such a, you know, a large task ahead of us, and yet, with a very small workforce, didn't want resources, you know, that's dedicated to that. And so, that quickly became, if we're still going to press hard, we need additional outside help that we can't, you know, hire in, uh, through the normal hiring process. And so, bringing that on, we're hopeful will help that we disseminate, you know, additional tasks that we need to get to. So, that's kind of behind some of what Rick is saying and being able to hopefully deliver something in that kind of a time period as we're bringing in reinforcements.
And what's the role that the court plays with this? The army court, it's really, my new guy is jurisdiction?
They're a regulatory agency, so they have some oversight in terms of the environmental permits. That's the only role they have committed.
We may see, uh, because it's part of the Illinois waterway system, and they, they of course got ecosystem studies related to that, uh, removal of this would be a big step towards their ecosystem goals from that side of the core. step towards their ecosystem goals from that side of the core. So we might keep pressing on them to, you know, acknowledge the benefit of doing this if we move forward, uh, as a, you know, state entity.
Is the king key part of the five nineteen program? Yes?
Yep, and, and fish passage, you know, the connectivity is what they call it in that, that's, that's a key component of that study. So obviously removing the dams and allowing fish passage up to, what did I say, a hundred and eighty-five miles, uh, that lights up big light bulbs for them in terms of their ecosystem goals and benefits from that study.
I know you addressed the breakaway nuclear plant. Do you guys check to see for sure it's on the pool or?
We've, we've contacted them. I, I was looking at a letter, you know, this afternoon before I came up that they responded to and basically what, that's what the letter said is that they had evaluated the dam enough to know that if it catastrophically failed this afternoon, that it wasn't going to create any sort of public safety issues from their operations. At the same time, it said, well, you know, we haven't given a great deal of thought into our daily operations or if there's some particular benefit that we haven't thought of yet of having the dam there, and so they might want to consider that a little further. But that's, that's essentially the statement that they'd made.
Our survey crew has been out here and surveyed the pool and when they reached the flat water upper end, they were still a mile down river from the intake. So would that have a backwater effect up there? If there is, it's very slight. We will be looking at that.
Do you see any major issues in terms of this project versus any of your other dam projects in terms of location or access or anything that you don't normally see with your other project?
Access, uh, we've talked, I know before, uh, on the west side there, I know some of the locals have suggested where there was a, you know, a road, dedicated road right away through there and apparently in the past, when other work has been done, they've utilized that. It's not, you know, be an interesting challenge. I don't know that it's unsurmountable or, you know, real issue there. I think it's just the mill race, the fact that you've got the two dams and they're separated about a particular distance and, and how that plays in and what, how the mill race could perform or how we'd want to see that perform. As I said, we'd want, we'd want to go forward with the local support and not as a, you know, as a partner, not an enemy. So that would be the key of figuring out what becomes of the mill race and how it ends up.
Is this one of the bigger dams you plan to take out or?
It's, it is one of, it's pretty big compared to some of these, but, but it's not, uh, it's similar in size to the Danville Dam and the one we did at Hoffman, so it's, it's not.
Probably wider, but it's not going to be tall.
Right.
It might be wider, yeah, but longer.
And then when you, you guys talk about one of the components of your study is the economic impact. Now, do you hire a, usually RP that out to a consultant to come back and say what the economic impact will be to our community with a removal or?
When I was saying economics, it was more of the putting a price tag to the various options, not so much the, uh, you know, what it, what it means in terms of economic impact to the community. I know in Riverside up there at the Hoffman Dam, there's as many or more fishermen that are hanging out there now and the fishermen are excited about the number of fish, you know, sixteen, seventeen miles upstream. So in terms of that, you know, fisheries side of things, it's been a very positive boom that's come from those projects. Uh, Blackberry Creek too, and the, the fish that they found upstream on Blackberry Creek this spring after the heavier spring flows, uh, you know, just the fisheries guys are ecstatic about what they're seeing there, so they decided to help us.
What about the Asian carp or the Asian carp?
The Asian carp, uh, but basically what we found, again, similar to what we were explaining to the city council in Danville, you know, their abilities to get over a dam like this is, is no big deal, especially on higher flows, uh, when the dam becomes submerged, it's easy, you know, trek, they don't even see it. Even in close like you have out there this afternoon, they can jump that, uh, without a problem. Uh, and actually what we found is in the pools up there, uh, they like that slow-moving stager, so they would actually tend to hang out in a condition like you've got there now in the pool than they would open, you know, rock bottom kind of flowing channels.
Harlan Rick, I want to thank you guys for coming up with that presentation. Um, we've also given us, you know, kinds of directive on which, you know, the areas you need to approach and, you know, to take into consideration. Appreciate you guys' time and coming up here to explain everything.
Let's go ahead and review, uh, the service agreement with McCann, uh, single foot contractor regards the tar chip, uh, of the alleys. I think we talked about tar chip, but Kayler Road did not include tar chip of that, but even before with that, I think you want to start the next week, correct?
Uh, they do, but, uh, today they, Kobe and Gary went out and a little more site reading out there. Uh, actually Kobe and them are, would be recommending that we should probably not even look at tar chip in the alleys. Uh, main reason is we are, we are seeing, you know, uh, basically, uh, rich in the background where the water, it's, uh, caused drainage issues and we have to put it, get down to the base and not more to make the tar chip, uh, be more effective and not cause drainage issues in the outside yards. The other thing is, is by looking at asphalt that's coming in now, it's already sort of stabilized, uh, we've got an estimate from, um, deconstruction that they can do the five alleys, six alleys for thirty-one thousand dollars. And that's what building outright, getting the approaches to driveways or garages that are back there will be all leveled off correctly. And now we've got asphalt instead of a tar chip. We all know tar chip is, should last the alleys because of the not reuse of alleys as much as they are, but the asphalt will last a lot longer and for a few, for ten thousand more dollars as well as more than ten thousand, like eighteen thousand more dollars, uh, you can get, get the asphalt in. We also need some MFT funds for that and where Kobe and Gary would believe, probably should go with the asphalt and then get part of our MFT project in the late summer, early fall. You know, McCann's going to be here next week for Kayler and, you know, Kayler Road's going to be, the last lift is about eight thousand dollars on that, so, um, I think we should probably take their recommendation and it's going to be more efficient, I think it's going to be engineer. It's raining, it's coming in, it's watching the way it's blowing out there. We've got a couple of neighbors contact, some of the alleys are about flooding and drainage issues. Uh, it's probably going to be better off with more of the asphalt. And that's going to cost us a few more dollars, but we can use that MFT.
And this is for widening the alleys too because I think the average alley is only ten feet wide, not twelve feet wide, so now we've got to open up the alleys wider too and that's all in the fix?
We're still, we're still staying with the ten, ten foot length, we're not doing any widening. We're just bringing the profile down because the, the running for those car tires is causing a very poor profile that we had out there. So in order to prepare this property with the tar chip, Gary and his guys have gone there with a stone themselves and laid, basically prepared the profile themselves, found stone and patch and whatnot. And then McCann is just simply a, a tar chip, uh.
Okay, I guess the question I got is earlier this week, uh, wasn't we told that McCann would do the alleys in Kayler for twenty thousand eight hundred?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, Kayler, Kayler and the six alleys is at twenty, over twenty thousand, you know, and Kayler's final lift is about eight thousand and the alleys would be about twelve, twelve five, uh, if we do six alleys.
So then if we have, uh, I know you guys have been talking to Bill about the grader, so we can bring the grader and integrate down and put the tar chip there?
Gary's concerned that, you know, he doesn't have, uh, experience with his grader maker whenever he just, you know, the way he viewed it during it was pretty, you can just bring the stone out of his trucks, you know, drop it from the trucks and ready it in, but you know, to roll that with, with a roller, you're not really going to get what you're looking for. It's just greater stump out there.
To roll what?
He said the profile, it's almost like upside down view.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So the fill in those, those outside areas, he's got to bring that, the, the trucks in, just dump it all and then basically just break it in to make that profile all the way down as, as we expressed these alleys.
Well, it sounds like he's going to bring the alley down below whatever property is on both sides of the alley.
Well, that, that's, that's the issue with the tar chip, we can't bring it down anyway. We have to manage that center profile and fill the stone in on the outside sections.
Other than the fact that we're going to spend another eighteen thousand dollars, we're not going to do anything to take care of the problem that the people have because if we're going to bring the alley up to where that dome is, the water's still going to go in everybody's yards.
Well, that, that's exactly the problem. That's why we're calling on the, the mill overlay with the asphalt.
When they mill it, Larry, they lower the grade several inches and haul that material away, which is building.
We, we stay with the tar chip.
So then when they put it back, they're not raising the grade.
That's the same thing I'm talking about with the road grader. Now, now they're telling me.
What you mean, what the road grader can pile it up, it's still got to be removed.
We, we do have tractors with buckets on them, right?
Gary's guys, they'd have to rent a bucket. They'd have to rent a bucket or two in order to do that. We don't have anything, you know, other than the tractor to, to haul the stone around or, you know, do any grading, basically drop a bucket.
By spending the extra eighteen thousand dollars, you're, you're taking five alleys and.
Six alleys.
Six alleys and eliminate an outstanding problem with, with the way the water's flowing. You, you improve the water flow on that thing and also you can fix six alleys, you're not going to have to worry about four, ten, twelve years.
And then also then by not doing the tar chip and by going with the asphalt will then address the residents' concern with the runoff.
The runoff exactly, the water stay in the alley and plus you'll be able to keep their concrete aprons and whatnot that are out there with the.
Right, instead of their concrete, their aprons being here and the tar chip is going to be up here.
And, and one thing we got to remember is alleys are an attractive, I'll say nuisance or certain type of activity. And for our police vehicles that go up and down alleys, you know, have a nice, you know, low maintenance type of operation out there, will, you know, will encourage and will encourage even our public to use the alleys when, you know, physical. Uh, so I mean, there's, it's a, it's a low maintenance fix, it's a, it's low maintenance after the fix of the asphalt. I think you're going to be in a maintenance recurrence with tar chip. And yeah, it might take three, three, make it three tar chips equal the asphalt, uh, to equal your thirty-one thousand dollars, but, you know, now your, the interruptions going on and, you know, your, the time you have to fix it, you know, whatever type of winter you have, it's spring. It's always nice to get a road done and not worry about it for ten or fifteen years. I think that'll, that'll be a plus. What, what I would recommend is, you know, WASSO probably needs to look at it. I don't think we should rush it into McCann and, you know, say, go do the alleys right now, you know, we're not comfortable with it, engineer, superintendent's not comfortable with that. It still could be an option, you know, McCann's in, you know, in, in the next Monday or Tuesday in Kayler. Doesn't mean we can't get him back here, you know, later in the year. We can even ask him if he's got a second project. He's coming in kind of early, probably doesn't get in our area until late July. So I, I recommend we don't, we don't do approval, we already gave Gary the authority for Kayler to go ahead and do Kayler if McCann comes in and it's a source. And I think at WASSO you can discuss it.
So what you're telling me is they're going to come down, they're going to grind that down.
Have they written a motion on it?
Then put, then put blacktop in on the alleys that we need and it's only going to cost us eighteen thousand dollars.
Eighteen thousand more than this, it'll be thirty-one thousand total. And we're budgeting twenty.
If I do what we're doing, let's say we stay on this, this track, you know, I got our, and what's, what's our, I mean, granted, we don't, we don't eliminate the water issues enough, probably create more water issues. Secondly, I mean, what's like time for we have to back them in?
Depends on how the weather, you know, comes in, comes in down in the spring or, you know, the fall or, you know, the winter, whatever, the freeze dogs would, you know, cause that stuff to bounce up and down and so on.
So we could be adding again next year?
Yeah, they could be sectioned.
And we ran into one, I can't remember. And snowplowing, you know, damages tar chip roads.
Those buckets don't have the profile in their buckets, you know, they're going straight through when they're taking the height point out of those profiles and those.
So now you got, now you got ice skating going on when, you know, when you put, you like to put salt down on, on there, which you need to, at, at alleys that have, that have.
Well, trust me, they don't put salt down on alleys. I've lived there for fourteen years and that's not one time.
It's where the stop sign, sure.
Guys, let's go to two corrections. Um, one, from council, if anybody, if somebody wants to make a recommendation to remove the, the alleyways to WASSO, maybe for further review, or if somebody wants to make the motion, we continue to go forward with the agreement. Either one, whatever council decides.
Is there six alleys or is there seven alleys?
I believe it's, I, I was always notified as six and I, I've seen six moment, there's a seventh one, I've never really been notified.
We got five on our side of the street, don't we, Tim?
Oh, I don't know.
From your place all the way down to Maine.
Yep, there's five on the north, one on the south.
And there's two on the south side.
One right now.
I live over there.
I know.
But there only were one or two?
I think originally there was two on the south side.
We didn't look at it. We didn't look at it.
I heard it was Kirby, but I wouldn't look at it, it was an asphalt.
That's not, that's not even one of the alleys, that's one of them that you're talking.
Talking about the mar.
You got the one over there that runs by Birch Place and you got the one that runs just east of Joliet, between Joliet and Washington, then you got the one that goes past behind Birch, then you got the one down by the mar.
But, but you and I talked about the mar, that's the first one I heard of.
But the two bad ones are, are Birch and the one between Joliet and Washington.
We're going to make a motion to send these back to water sources, now are they considered asphalt or?
That's our.
Where's the funding from?
Do we have enough, do we have enough for another, talking, uh, another dollar boost? Yeah, we'll, we'll demonstrate that if you guys send it back to WASSO, open it up.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we send the, um, the, uh, the tar chip resonated alleys within the city back to WASSO.
WASSO Valley, happy to go second. Second, personal. Give a further discussion.
Yeah, you said how many dollars to do this in blacktop?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one thousand?
That was the one I got. Any further discussion? Go call both, please.
Alderman Hobbie? Yes. Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Hall, Larry?
Yes.
Sorry. Alderman Curly?
Yes.
Alderman Van Den?
Yes.
Alderman Curry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stewart?
Yes.
Alderman Stewart?
Yes.
All yes selection passes.
All right, move back up number five, review, uh, this year's fiscal year two thousand and fourteen budget.
Yeah, the task was, for staff was to come back with the enterprise fund for water reclamation and we have that, uh, here. So it's, uh, let's see, we have, well, it says page ten in the budget point. Right at the right hand corner, you'll see a bow. So what we've done is, uh, we've taken all the expenses, Bob's gone over, Robin's gone over, myself, we've realigned them and put them where we're at. And at this point in time, you'll be looking at the, what, tenet water? I don't know. That's what, that's what. Hundred sixty-seven thousand is what's going to be the end, end year. Hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven fifty-seven will be the end of the, uh, year expenditures to the plus. to the plus. Now, the concern was, as we're doing the tier phasing with the water and sewer rates, look at pages fourteen and fifteen, that's the budget. So we're at one hundred and sixty-seven thousand plus by the end of the year, April thirtieth is what we're projecting. We have a carryover of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-four thousand that'll be happening that is allocated toward a reserve for the IEP gain. And when we look at our receivables, you know, we usually carry somewhere right around this one forty-two. At the end of the year, when we looked over the receivables, we were right at the point of collections. So as receivables come in, using the lake fees, these receivables will probably go down to, on the average, we're about sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars usually have receivables. So when we add up, we add up the funds for the June payment of two thousand and fourteen, that's our concern because it's tiering this sewer again, we'll have about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, not counting the May utility billing that'll come in, which is somewhere around sixty-five thousand dollars or more. So we're going to have the money, we'll have the money for the sewer payment in June of two thousand and fourteen. In the budget, we did budget for the December payment. As you can see, we did interest and we did full principal payment and interest for there. So with keeping the maintenance person on, we'll have the funds to be able to make those payments. It's a tight budget. We did use very conservative collection numbers, you know, ninety-four percent on one end and ninety-five percent on another end. We're usually about ninety-eight percent, but I'd rather, knowing what things are happening in life, we were estimating our revenue a little less, just in case, you know, rather err on, rather err on the revenue side. That way budget dollars aren't there because of revenue, you know, it's not good. So as all the department had demonstrated last year, given the task of staying where you're at, knowing where they're at and look at these numbers, I'm pretty comfortable that, you know, keeping the maintenance person on for a year, we can afford it. You know, it's a policy discussion you got to have. I think it helps with the relief, it helps with staying proactive on maintenance, preventative maintenance, mazes at the plant. It gives a little bit of redundancy of having three, four FTEs there. Even our study that we have with H R Green recommends three point five FTEs for the water and the sewer plant. So we're still even under recommended by the engineer study. So it's, we just wanted to see the actual numbers, last time we were throwing out a lot of them. So we plugged them all in and that's what we're at.
So that cash, two thirty-four, is that a guarantee that hand cash or?
No, it's not guaranteed because we had the auditors, we had the auditors here yesterday where I want them to reconcile along with Rob, you know, he's had checks and balances. Actually, when the auditors were here, they believed that there's nineteen thousand more looking at, working on their quick snapshot. But, you know, they'll give me an answer as they take all the books out of here and put on their computers. Like when I was talking to them at the end, they thought there were a little more cash that was there, but.
That's over that five eighty-one, right?
Correct. But I think we're, we're comfortable, I mean, even if we're at short of thousands, like I say, we take the conservative numbers and go to percentages, and the receivables came in, you know, like I say, we're about four sixty, we need four fifty for the, for the payment. And that's, and we didn't count next year's mazes, I didn't count next year's mazes receivables at all. It's under cushion, just in case, so. I think we're comfortable, it's where you're going to just call on, you keep a third person in there. I think Bob's come to a lot of WASSO meetings with a lot of documentation and the work that's been performed by having that extra person. And then they may say, what are our, what are our operators get hurt or are illness who just needs some time off? And there's not a whole lot of relief there in the two guys society. Yes, Gary's, one of Gary's, oh, it works, guy was just training up to go over to fill in. But, you know, we're, remember Gary's got one person, he's been laid off one.
Who was laid off?
Jim Barker, or, it's three two one.
I think, I think one of the biggest concerns I had in regards to all this is, and you love the whole concept, is, and look at what Bob does with two guys. Well, the sewer plant department, you want to try, I mean, we always want to try to get to a point where we're more preventative and our maintenance, we're not reactive. By having just the two individuals, we're continually reactive. We're reacting to situations instead of trying to be preventative and trying to catch the situation before it happens. It ends up saving us lots of dollars when you can be more preventative than reactive. And that was one of the big, take the talk of Bob, what he's trying to get to. He wants to get to a point where he can be more preventative in the stuff he's got. You guys see, he's showing you pictures of what we have out there, and he has very limited resources in trying to be able to get to improve those situations, so. And I understand fully where Bob's coming from, and you guys demonstrated that by keeping that maintenance person in there, we're able to leave the numbers. But at the same time, I think we can get to a point where we can be more preventative. It helps Bob get more preventative of the issues he's got to deal with instead of reacting, which I think is what we're looking at.
I think Bob made a good point that some of the work that he calls out the vendors for, the contractors, are because they don't have time to do that work themselves and, or dedicate time to it, because it might be a six hour job and they need to be working in the plant to fix something in one of the pumps. Remember, we got a lot of pump stations in this town, we're kind of unique that way. Most towns try to stay away from pump stations as much as they can, grab the greatest, the greatest friend for sanitary stores and less costly, like doing our topography and the way we're set up, we have pump stations. And we're not giving less pump stations. You know, so. So as you guys, you guys' discussion, I think we've.
Well, I think that was like the big issue we had last time. Is there any other concerns the council has? I know we messed up with personnel regards to detective sessions, so.
Just reviewing some of the numbers here, I was looking at the reserve for that put into overtime for the police department, it's put in a hundred thousand. Is that a realistic number considering the year before we actually one hundred and twenty-five thousand?
I, I think it's realistic based on what they know today. And, you know, if we are able to hire a lateral, which sounds like, you know, you're going to see somebody hired there, it's coming up. Getting the two from Ridge in September is going to be very helpful to their overtime, you know, budget. And there's some challenges issue, challenges every year it seems like.
If you look at just one item, it's always been a challenge when dealing with, talking with the chief. It's always a challenge because we don't know what to expect with, you know, because you know what we've dealt with when people went off for job related injuries or whatever else happened to that whole process, so that thing tends to fluctuate. And if we look, if you look at it from a monthly basis, sometimes we get scared when we look at the first three months of the budget year because it seems relatively high, but it's usually vacation seasons in the summer, wintertime, it usually tails off. But if you take the police budget as a whole, okay, instead of just one line item, the police budget does come under or meet their budget every year. And so they try and put that one line item, they're trying to stick that number that they feel comfortable with, talk with the chief, ended up the chief, with being able to bring that lateral in, hopefully everything should be ready, we can move forward with that at the council meeting, to bring that person who started to be evacuated. So, yeah, it was something they looked at very diligently and are comfortable with those numbers as we go progressively after year.
Is that nine hundred and sixty-one thousand also got that hundred and forty-five from Ridge in September? For the two police officers?
Yes, it is, yeah, in the budget, yeah, the salary line, yes, I didn't verify there. The two officers are in there.
So then actually, we've taken that, one forty-five, I believe is what it was, right?
On the revenue side?
That's everything. So actually, that would be pretty close to possibly even less than what they asked for last year, right?
Yes, yeah, if you take the two officers off the cost, then their budget comes down to. It was one man, six eighty-one last year, asked for one day, seven seventy-three. You take one forty-five off, you're down to one, one six forty.
The only other number I see here that just prides out not enough is the legal services number.
Under trace?
Yeah.
Well, I know the last one was actually because we were dealing with a certain situation regards to like, but if you go, I think if you go back to previous years, it's pretty close to what it was in Orvis.
We're going to go back to twenty eleven.
That's a challenge.
Well, in twenty twelve, when you get reversed, forty-eight thousand dollars, which you don't really see in that line item.
So wishful thinking, I guess.
I think, yeah, I think it's wishful, I think it's.
But you can only thank your best guests.
Well, they're pretty accurate numbers, and I mean, I've had a lot of time with the chief, manning the deputy chief, all of these numbers, so, yeah, to make sure that they're covered up, because ultimately, they're the ones that are responsible for the reflection.
Let's jump forward to the general corporate. Your building permit fees, that would be page three.
Yeah, okay.
Tell me about just three hundred and fifty thousand on building permit fees.
Yeah, that's, that's the estimated building that will come in from Ridge, Ridgeport. In the agreement, we have a one percent fee for, toward the construction, building materials that, and what's on, what's, right now, we got one building under review, that's five hundred and sixty thousand square feet. The other concept planted, we're looking at now with the, on the commercial end, that we bring in about sixty thousand dollars of fees on that one. And then we have three other buildings that are in concept, and that's what we call the dollars, the square footage of those buildings. And those are the ones, we're not just, we're seeing actual footprints of what they are. And so it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue coming in. So we're estimating, we're estimating a little bit on the low side, we, you know, we didn't take the square footage costs of like thirty-two dollars square foot, we're down at twenty-two dollars a square foot on a, we call a shell building, and it's pretty low number of building for that, but I want to stay, I want to stay very, very conservative on what the permit will be.
So the full numbers you think we'll take at this point?
Yeah. Inspector Lev on, on, just another building I mean to say, we're, we're ready to, we've just finished up with the final sprinkler review, and, you know, the next step is going to be with those comments, it's going to be a permit for the, for that five hundred square foot. As you tell, we got the pad ready already out there, rain just stopped. On the commercial one, they have a contract with the tribal plaza, so we're, we're a second version of that, so that one's pretty solid. Three, transload, the cold storage, food process in one, they, it's all dependent on Roma de Norte right now, and the answer for that will be probably Monday. So they've, what I was told, maybe.
So that three hundred and fifty thousand, what they call it, inspector, is what's up? Yeah, I know, but I'm looking at other.
I know, I mean, we, we know, right, we know what fees, we know what property taxes are coming in. We're hoping these buildings are going to be built, that's what I'm talking about. The state local income tax, you show a change if that's, if you're up to almost forty, forty thousand dollars here?
Yes, the, that comes from the state itself, the revenue projections that they come out of, what it is per capita, they drive this per capita, so we plug in the full serve, serve number. That changes about every three months, goes up sometimes three dollars, down three dollars. Today was a good day for legislative purposes, they did take all the local government revenue sharing out, a lot of the dollars would be taken out of budget for any of our, our dollars that are sticking up there. So that number's a good number. But it was, it is down a little bit because of the state economy.
They've developed a reimbursement line, you're looking at a hundred grand there, you got to have something in mind there, you know where it's coming from.
That is, I think. It's from going to the, and normally, that's only a wash because it comes out of our planning, we put numbers there, we put numbers back on the expense side, but I want to make sure that. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is self used as an expense for developers. Part of that is on the Ridge, Ridge point. Well, that's sort of the prepaid that Ridge did. So that three hundred and fifty thousand, we plugged in, if you remember, we got the seven hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand was going toward the water plant, three fifty went toward prepaid for permits. So actually, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we took out the fifty percent payment for that, so we don't get it, we don't pay it. You know, I had to check that a hundred thousand, what guy's coming out?
I want to jump to Public Works on page six. First line, top line, wages, they're up eighty thousand dollars, what's it like then?
Oh, this is the formula. We, remember we changed from the water rate study, we changed the formula where it's at fifty fifty, fifty percent out of general corporate, twenty-five on the water, twenty-five on the sewer.
Okay, that's where that came from, so. So that got adjusted out of another budget, basically, where you're talking about the level of usage of people?
Well, okay, adjusted by seventy percent of, seventy percent of the wages out of the public works crew now comes out of general corporate. Before it was fifty percent, and then twenty percent comes out of water, ten percent comes out of sewer on their, on their, on their wages. Before it was fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five.
So how much is coming out of public this budget? Why is that number jumping so much higher?
Because twenty, twenty more percent of their wages now comes out of general corporate instead of coming out of water and sewer plant. So water and sewer plant dropped on wages because of the allocation.
Water dropped a thousand bucks. Yeah, much bigger than those, so it's your general, close to sixty.
Yeah, because in her calculations, your product calculations here, she has down three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars down base wages, and we're at two forty-six. So the other, the other part of the funds comes out of water and sewer plant. Before it was, I'd say more than that, it's been more than water and sewer, so twenty-one out.
And she's hard to grasp, we need to pull the wage number. The wage number isn't there in the split, you know, being sample, something we have. It's hard to grasp that. Hey, Jay, consulting, uh, planning and zoning, you're consulting developer speed. Project two hundred seventy-five thousand, is that had something to do with the buildings or what we're doing?
Yeah, that's, that's got to do with, you know, uh, the build outs of Ridgeport that that's a fee that is an expense and ultimately do get reimbursed to be a pass or some sort of...
So, that you're objective of what's coming out.
And that's a pass to a cap, it's just a three thirty eight. Same thing with legal services for developers.
On the, uh, fund two, on the next page, you show a, uh, a huge fund balance this year of fifty-six thousand, hundred twenty-nine. What is that reflecting?
That should be the water plant, no, it's not water plant, water plant, she said. That's what's left over at the end of the year. Let's see, I'm writing it, hold on. Yeah. Well, thirty-eighty thousand's left over at the end of the year.
You had a number.
I'm asking, I'm asking, it doesn't, doesn't match up.
Right.
Yeah. Got more than less.
On the, um, on page ten, um, I just have one question about the, uh... You've got maintenance of fire hydrants and, uh, you've got maintenance of fire hydrants and then you have fire hydrants, uh, you got it addressed twice. What's the difference between the two?
The maintenance is what they call a change of cap, a change of, uh, a stem in there. And then fire hydrants actually what they...
Buying some units?
Yeah, okay.
Um, you've got transfer of other funds at the bottom of that line. There's sixty-six thousand dollars to be transferred, where's that coming from?
That should be... Transfer of the water should go into the capital. And she's got it in the capital, uh, project volume seventeen, sixty-six thousand, which covers, uh, the projects. Five days, but she got the water planer.
It says to transfer to other funds. And it shows up on seventeen, transfers from other funds this year.
Yeah, it's supporting the capital project fund, which, you know, maintenance to the equipment in the water plant, which you got file, the doors and, uh, the car.
The one other item that I was looking for, Tony, is, is the pavement of the parking lot, where's that at?
Other north, toward North Island. Should be in the capital, should be in twenty-four, if I remember right. Capital project fund, twenty-four, that's where it should be, in the one. Uh, North Island by, whoa. Is there? Okay, hold on. Oh, there, no, that changed phase one. That was, that was when we were doing the whole planning, um...
What page are you on?
Page twenty-two. The North, uh, the North Island parking lot, phase one, hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And we're still looking with all the, with the projects that are being proposed up there, we're still looking at a sixty-five thousand dollar fund balance. And one thing you notice, uh, Ridge, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars is going into the capital project fund this year. So, you'll be looking to use some of those dollars for capital projects.
Can that money be used for, can, might be used on that for alleys and things of that nature?
I have to look at the annexation. I'm pretty sure with just a straight contribution, either it had dollars attached or had restricted fund status attached or the annexation.
We look at tied to M S P dollars, which is one of the tax dollars in those alleyways.
I'm just, uh, I just have a genuine concern about, uh, the shape of some of these water mains that we have out here. You know, we're, we're spending money to build a parking lot when we got our, you know, our Public Works Director screaming at us that we better do something about some of these water mains for, for emergency, just, just something.
We are grossed up, we are grossed up with the water mains because that's why we're seeking out the, uh, the grant dollars and the low interest bond dollars to get those big projects down. I mean, hundred seventy-five thousand dollars that can be entrusted, a lot of them.
Yeah, and in project seventeen, we did put in the I E P A loan for the water main replacement for Robert, the trio by the region, B O W, twenty-six thousand dollars.
Okay. Somebody else's turn. Where are you guys at?
No.
This is all my concern.
No, you did.
Hi, Nelson, you guys wanna go to executive session to discuss personnel? And, uh, I don't think we have anything on collective bargaining, just personnel.
Uh, we do.
Do we have, yeah, hey, drop something off, please. I'll say I think I'm... Do we need to go to executive session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining? I'd like to get a motion for that. Nelson, go to executive session.
I make a motion to go into the executive session at seven sixteen. A motion by Alderman, how do we have a second?
On second.
To discuss personnel. And collective bargaining?
There you go. And a second by Alderman, Tudor. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hope?
Yes.
All your students.
All right, any motion to come back out of executive session? I make the motion to come back out of the executive session at eight oh four. Motion by Alderman Hall, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, roll call, please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hope?
Yes.
All, all your students.
Thank you. Out of executive session, no action, we take him in regards to executive session. Uh, next item is just for the council to, special council, the central council, the recommendation on the, uh, for... Do we have anything to do with that? From a special council or a local council? It was just basically if you want, uh, for everyone to smell, you know? And we discussed some minor adjustments and, uh, we should do that. I'll have it on the agenda for next week. Council will discuss and, uh, modify for next week. All right, so we go with that briefly. Our next regular city council meeting is for next Tuesday, two o'clock P M. Any motion to adjourn?
No.
Second, here. Yeah, Derek.